About 20 letters that the selectmen and I will be reading. And we will also be entertaining comments from the audience by way of Kevin Armstrong, who will be taking your requests for comments throughout the presentations. And then we'll take them in order. First, we're going to review some of the projects that we have going on in our town right now. The Spring Street and East Main Street project, as many of you are aware, was completed recently. We have a new road, sidewalks, water, and new sewer mains. We also have finished quite a bit of our sidewalk project, and that included new sidewalks on Main Street, Freestone Avenue, Waverly, East Main Street, and Fairview Street. Our Route 17 park is substantially complete, and we look forward to the ribbon cutting of that spectacular new park. Our parking lots, we have paved at Fire Company Number One. And we've made significant progression toward the work at Fire Company Number Two in installing a new roof. Next slide. We've made some improvements to traffic safety. We have two new digital speed signs, one on High Street and one on Ames Hollow. And I'm pleased to state that we've seen some folks slowing down with their speeds after those signs were put up. We have a new roof at the Highway Garage, a new boiler at Valley View School. We have resurfaced the tennis courts. And we've also made improvements at the kitchen and the learning cafe at Portland High School. The next slide shows other improvements. We have an improved sprinkler system at Brownstone Intermediate School. We've installed new flooring here at the senior center, as well as at the Buck Foreman Building on Main Street. And we're continuing hard work by our water and sewer systems and our committee, which is chaired by Jim Tripp. They're working very hard on reviewing our water and sewer systems. Some of our other recent projects, we're undergoing improvements at our library. Thanks to the initiative of our library director and our library board, we have a generous grant from the State of Connecticut and a very generous contribution from the Library Endowment Fund. That project is being done without local tax money. It's being completed with the state grant and the generosity of benefactors of our library. We're going to be, in the spring and early summer, working on a $200,000 sidewalk grant for Main Street, which will continue the sidewalk work that we started last year. And it's through the generosity of a State of Connecticut grant that we were successful at obtaining for the $200,000. We're also promoting farms in our community. Farming is a long heritage in our town, and we feel that it's a very important business and a sustainable endeavor for us. In addition, we're looking at expansion possibilities for our airline trail, which we have completed the 2.7-mile improvement on. And we're also looking at a potential canoe and kayak launch. We have not made the determination of that site, but it is a committee that's working on that. Along with a potential, there is some interest in a dog park. That is not something that we have currently located, but it is on the list. In addition, we have some very interesting proposals for renewable energy, and we believe that that will entail some electricity savings. We're entertaining a proposal for a solar farm by which, through virtual net metering, the town and the schools will be able to save, we hope, significant money. It's something that we are working on, and it is a potential. Within our infrastructure and capital areas of our town, there's been many improvements made since 2017. And I'm going to go over that list with you now. We had a capital lease program in fiscal year 18. And with that, we were successful in getting police and animal control operations radio equipment. Oh, excuse me. Let me just make sure I have the right slide. Grounds, excuse me. The dump truck. We bought a new dump truck with that lease program, a new tractor for the grounds department, as well as police vehicles for the amount of $148,000. A new fingerprint machine and new fire vehicles. In 2018, we also were successful in getting improved radio equipment for our police and our animal control. We also purchased a new generator for electrical outages that was, will be at our town hall, a new street sweeper for $219,000. We have a new aerial lift truck purchased in 2018, as well as a large dump truck with plows. In addition, a backhoe, a paver, a wood chipper. Resource recovery, we bought a new scale for the bulky waste. And we also bought a new printer scanner for our information technology department. Continuing with other capital and infrastructure improvements, we also have new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning towers at the Portland Library. We have a new generator at the Co. Avenue Sewer Pump Station. We've had some painting at the town hall and new furnaces at Company One, as well as the town garage. Brownstone School windows, we've replaced all of the windows and done a significant amount of improvements to the floors. In addition, new police reporting system and radios, an airline trail completed, as you all know, water and sewer safety improvements, as well as a new senior bus that we're sharing with Cromwell. And the town Route 17 park, as I mentioned earlier, has been completed, as well as the sidewalks. Some of the other work that we've done includes new LED streetlights that have saved us some significant amount of money for the electricity associated with the streetlights. We've repaved Fire Company Two and Three parking lots. We've made improvements to Agalotti Field and the reservoir dam improvements as well. We've resurfaced the tennis courts at the Portland High School. We've also improved the Wi-Fi. It was a significant project that was completed at the high school, middle school complex. We've also purchased projectors, smart boards, Chromebooks for the Board of Education. We've purchased a hot box for paving with the highway department. We've added new road sensors to our dump trucks so that not too much salt is put on the roads in the wintertime. We have a diagnostic machine for the vehicle maintenance, which helps in maintaining our equipment. And we have a new trailer for the grounds. And the last slide shows us that we've purchased a new townwide backup system for our computer systems, which is critical for our infrastructure, as well as purchased a new dump body for the highway department truck. I now want to go into some details associated with the proposed budget. I want to reiterate that the process for our budget adoption includes a proposed budget that comes out from the first selectwoman's office. And we're in the process now of reviewing that proposal. The next step will be the selectmen's workshops. They will submit a budget to the general public, at which they will comment at a town meeting and vote at a referendum. Pending all of the various emergency safety things that we have going with Corona, we will certainly give you updates as to when those meetings will be held and so forth. In summary, the proposed budget from my office is $35,614,610. This is an overall 2.76% increase over the current fiscal year 20 budget. The general government budget is a 2.71% increase. This includes debt service, capital improvements, as well as all general government except for Board of Education. That figure is $13,762,444. And the proposal for the Board of Education is an increase of 2.8%. And the total is $21,852,166. I want to take a little perspective on budget expenditures for the town of Portland over the last five years. I always state how important it is to look not just at what your proposal is for next year, but retrospectively what you have seen. And also, we may have some opportunity to talk about prospective as well. But at this point, we're looking at 2017. We had an overall increase of 1.15% budgeted expenditures, and that was for both general government, debt, and capital and Board of Education. As well, in 2018, the increase was 3.57%. In 2019, it was a little less, at 1.16%. In 2020, which is the year we're in now, we had a 1.59% increase in expenditures. And the proposal that is in front of the selectmen for their consideration tonight is 2.76% increase over current expenditures for fiscal year 2021. If you add the five years together, the budgeted expenditures for the last five years is 10.23%, which is a little more than 2% over average for each year. I also, in this slide, want to show you the two major portions of our general budget. In general government in 2017, we saw a 1.6% increase. Education had a 0.87% increase. In 2018, general government saw a 2.76% increase. Board of Education had a 4.08% increase that year. In 2019, the general government had a 3% increase. That year, we had a significant, if I'm not mistaken, amount of capital and lease improvements that we were budgeting that year. Is that right, Tom? Yes. And this Board of Education had a 0% increase that year. In 2020, the current year, general government had a 0.31%, less than 1% increase. The Board of Education in this current year has a 2.42% increase. The proposal, as I stated earlier, is 2.71% for general government and 2.8% increase proposed for the Board of Education. If you add all of those budgeted expenditures over the last five years, you can see it's very similar to the overall budget. It exceeds 10%, 10.38% for general government, 10.17% for education, which is an average of about 2% in each of the large categories of our budgets. Yes?
On the fiscal '19 question, which asks you, did you have the first open part of the lease payment for the program a year before, and they also had a bond issue that year? Do we add some bond closing costs or included in part number?
Tom Robinson, our Director of Finance, was explaining that in 2019, the 3% reflects some of the bond payments, as well as some of the expenditures associated with the lease payment. Correct, Tom?
Yeah, bond issue cost.
The bond issue cost, excuse me. The bond issue costs, as well as the expenditures associated with the lease payment. The next few slides, we're going to talk about general government expenditures by function. Within the proposal that I've put in front of the selectmen for general administration, it's an increase of 1.2%. Within public safety, we have an increase of 3.3%. I'm just going to take a pause because I see David. Do you have any questions about the technology?
No, John, the town wants to go to the podium and be heard as well.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just getting information that if any of the selectmen or the staff want to have input, you should use the microphones in front of you or at the podium. Thank you. So public safety is an increase of 3.3%. Public works is less than 1%. It's 0.88%. Planning and development, we have proposed 2.89%. Health and Human Services, 2.39%. The Portland Library is a little less than 2% at 1.98. Employee fringes are coming in at 2.82. I'm pleased to state that due to the work of our health advisors in terms of our insurance, our insurance came in at about 6.6% increase. Is that right, Tom?
That was the bid, yeah. I think we budgeted about 3%.
But for general government, because of some of the negotiations that we've done with our collective bargaining groups, the increase is at about 3%. I think the Board of Ed is at about 5%. At about 5 and 1/2%, which is a better number than some previous years that we've seen. So we're pleased with that. In terms of liability insurance, that's up 1.23%. Our debt service, which is the first year of our principal payment for the bond issuance of 2016? Yes. The bond issuance.
The bond issuance was 2019.
2019, excuse me. The referendum was 2016. But I wanted to point out that this current year, 2020, we had no principal payment. So this was a planned expenditure that we knew that we would be incurring, not only the interest, but also the first year of the principal payment. The transfers, including those to capital, is down by 5.72%. And contingency is flat at zero. In terms of capital items within the general government, we have those that are funded through the general fund taxation, through the local capital improvement or local, excuse me, LoSIP funding. We have no capital lease here. There was a request by our departments to have a capital lease program. And there was also requests throughout our departments, including that of the Board of Education. If we had a capital lease-funded endeavor this year, along with all that had been requested, the mil rate increase would be 1.9 mils. So the proposal that is in front of you is a 0.8 and change mil increase. It does not include a capital lease. Some questions had come up on that for me in the past. In terms of water and sewer, we also are funding some capital from the water and sewer budget. I want to talk a little bit about where your money goes in terms of our expenditures. And by every $100, if you look at this chart, you'll see over the course from 2018 to 2019 to 2020 and the proposal for 2021, the administration and finance has ranged from 4.02 in 2019 to 4.23 cents of every $100. It's down to $4.16. Public safety is up slightly. You can see it's up over the last four years, as public safety continues to increase slightly every year. Public works has seen a low of $6.31 for every $100 to a high of $6.63, or $6.63 in 2020, and it's down slightly next year. Planning and development has remained the same as last year. At about 49 cents out of every $100 goes toward planning and development. Health and Human Services, about 91 cents. $2.08 from a low of $2.01 goes for every $100 to our library. Our fringe benefits have increased over time, although they are flat from 2020. This is general government only. We pay out of every $100 for our employees, fringe benefits are $8.79. Within our risk services and insurance, we went from a low of 39 cents for every $100 to 49 cents projected for 2021. So for all of these functions on this page, out of every $100 that we spend in the town, $29.44 are represented on this page. Debt service goes from a high of $6.14 in 2018, and it's actually lower than it had been since 2018. We're now looking at $5.94 out of every $100. For transfers to other funds, including capital, youth services, parks and recreation, and some of our other funds from which we take money and send it to those funds, we're down a little bit from last year, and certainly down from a high of $4.10. So that's trending lower, $3.26. So total general government is slightly less for this projection at $38.64. For every $100, we are spending $38.64 for general government. The Board of Education is up 2 cents from last year, but the high was $63 in 2018, and it's going to be $61.36 in 2021. So that gives you some perspective as to how dollars are spent by function. I want to talk a little bit now about how we pay for those expenditures in terms of our revenues. Our revenues come from certainly the economic development that we're seeing in our town. And our town is working very hard to see improvements at Brainerd Place. Dairy Queen is broken ground, and they're proceeding. 1600 Portland Cobalt Road is a project that is started, but hasn't started building yet, but the site improvements are being done. Core Review, many of you may have been by that new project down along Brownstone Avenue. And that will, and they've come in with a site application, they'll be doing some improvements in addition at that site. Mitzi Cosmetics is a very entrepreneurial and successful company that's manufacturing up in Route 17 and their new development there. And the Brownfields redevelopment is a project that the town is working on, and we look forward to some commercial development appearing down on Brownstone Avenue. In terms of actual dollars coming into the town, we get $4,534,146 in state revenues. That's about $45,000 and change increase from fiscal year 2020. And most of that is for education cost sharing. That's where most of that money comes from. In terms of our grand list, we saw actually one of our better years for growth at 1.3%. We see $10,777,820 more that is being taxed on our grand list. So the total grand list is 839,520, no, 839,526,420. Excuse me. So this increase in the grand list means that for next year, if you take the $10,778 increase for every mil times the current mil rate, which is 33.81, we're realizing $364,404.18 in new revenue because of the growth in the grand list. So we're very proud of that, and it is for our land use and our departments and a lot of the work that they have done over the past several years that we're able to see some good improvements. We're trending the right way on the grand list. In terms of proposed town fees, we're looking at a slight reduction in fees. Some of that is due to the fact that last year, some of the bond issuance revenues were enhancing our fees, and we had some other changes within our fees. So there's a slight decrease for next year. In terms of investment income, this is something that is not particularly good news. Our projection for next year in terms of revenue from investment, that is the millions of dollars that we have in our fund balance, and they're invested in very conservative places. We're going to see a $135,000 decrease. This is due to a significant drop in interest rates. And I must point out that the dollars that are in your budgets, selectmen, do not reflect the current reduction in the interest rates that were made most recently this week. So those revenues will actually decrease more than you're seeing on the screen. That is not necessarily good news, but it's a function of our national trending. We also are seeing, we have less of the bond proceeds. Last year, they were earning interest, so we were able to garner some additional income last year that we don't have this year because we've actually implemented the projects and paid for them. I want to give a five-year perspective on taxes. Taxes is always a topic of discussion when you talk about budgets. And if you look at the percentage increases that the town of Portland has had over the last several years, 0.53% increase in 2017. In 2018, taxes increased 1.46%. Taxes increased in 2019, 2.52%. In 2020, there was no tax increase. And 2021, a 2.51% is the proposed increase. So while, you know, we've been able to increase our expenditures, our revenues have kept pace, and taxes in terms of percentage increases have been very, very, I think, very prudent. And it's something that this board has worked very hard on. For the fiscal year 21, we're looking at a 0.85 mil increase, which raises approximately $713,597 in new revenue. So when you talk about a mil increase, the mil increase would be about $834,000 for a full mil. At a 0.85, it's 713597. I want to talk briefly about water and sewer. The water budget is about $1.5 million. It's a 1.11% increase. As part of this public hearing, we would entertain comments on water, and we will also entertain comments on sewer, which is $1.66 million, which is a slight decrease over the current year. I want to point out that we're going to have a workshop tomorrow night. We're going to be also using Zoom so that you can observe some of the discussions and details on our budget on March 18th. On March 24th, which is next week, we will be also having a workshop. And if we need one, we will schedule one for the 25th. The Board of Education is on the 24th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We will deliberate, and that is a time when the selectmen add, subtract, and change the budget that's before them. I don't think, in the many budgets that I have prepared, we have ever had the budget that I put forward actually go to referendum. So there's going to be a lot of changes to this budget. There's a lot of changes due to information that we will receive, changes that we need to make, and priorities that this Board of Selectmen will make as they listen and try to do their best to put forward a good budget. Before April 8th, we need to have a Board of Selectmen-approved budget. The town meeting is scheduled by charter for May 4th, and the referendum is scheduled by charter for May 11. Should that budget not pass, then a second referendum may be held, but at any rate, a budget needs to be adopted on or before May 31 by charter. I just want to add that, given the circumstances of our national emergency in terms of the coronavirus, we have not received any information as far as what we'll be able to do in terms of large crowd gatherings, whether it's at a referendum, whether it's at meetings. So for the next two weeks, at a minimum, we will be hosting our workshops and our public hearings and any other meetings by way of electronic, and we'll be using Zoom, which is interactive. So with that, I want to thank you for listening. And we're going to now hear from Dr. O'Reilly. So if you could just give us a few minutes until we put up Dr. O'Reilly's slides.
I'm fine. I'm ready to go. Good evening, first selectwoman, Bransfield.
Good evening, Detective O'Reilly.
And good evening to our public. So I'm here with our board chair, Sharon Peters, who will assist me as we outline this year's proposed budget from the Board of Education. Are we click, am I clicking?
Yes. There we go.
There we go. Good. So I'd like to begin by sharing with you some of our 21st century teaching and learning priorities as we continue on this endeavor of increasing the demands of our students. As everyone knows, we have spent the last couple of years introducing a new math program, both K-5, the Bridges Program, and also our and also our middle and high school age students, or particularly our middle-aged students to the illustrative program. We are implementing many new frameworks in social studies, world language, and particularly, some of the more difficult ones are science frameworks. We're implementing new graduation reforms, starting in with our 2023 graduate, which is our current freshman class. We have full-year adjustments in civics that were, that have been implemented for them. And we are continuing to explore our pathways for kids and our mastery-based experience and increasing those.
Can I have a request that Philip get a little closer to the microphone, please?
Okay.
Thank you, Philip.
Is this better? Great. We have, one of our initiatives this year is our Google certification training for all middle school and high school staff. And I might add that that certification training is coming in quite handy the past week as we transition to online learning in the Portland Public Schools. Also, one of our major initiatives this year has been the greater alignment of our new curriculum areas and the assessments that we are required to give by the state of Connecticut. And, and aligned with that has been our initiative to make sure that all of our students are increasing at least one year's growth in all of those subject areas. And that, as you would imagine, is very difficult, particularly as we face the, the growing challenges of, of students with special needs. And I'd like to focus on that a little bit. So I'd like to talk about those particular areas of growth that I see as your departing superintendent and that Dr. Britton will inherit as, as the district moves forward on, on July one. Clearly, and, and the Board of Education and I think the Board of Selectmen have seen and heard me speak, as well as the Director of Student Services speak about the increases in students with more significant emotional and behavioral challenges. This is a growing population of our students. And reflected in that, that is the fact that we have an increased population of students who the state calls our high-needs subgroup, if you will. So listen carefully because we are evaluated based on the performance of all students, but we're also evaluated on this subgroup of high-needs students and how well they're, they're increasing as compared to our general population of students. And that is a significant challenge. At our, one of our more recent board meetings, the board reviewed our report card, if you will, and the, and the subgroup area of need has clearly been highlighted for many of our areas, especially mathematics and language arts. School culture and climate, that is a continual challenge for us. And especially as we face these more significant behavioral, emotional needs and really giving our teachers the tools to meet those challenges of students who may have those particular needs. And then it is no surprise to anybody that our schools continue to upgrade our school security measures. We've had a number of, of incidences this year. And this budget reflects some of the changes that we want to make relative to school security. So let me bring you through the process a little bit. Our Board of Ed on January twenty-first, relatively early in the budget season, proposed or accepted unanimously a four point four-six percent budget, roughly twenty-two million dollar budget. As the First Selectwoman Bransfield just indicated, she has recommended to the Board of Selectmen a two point eight percent budget, which is about a reduction of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And then on March tenth, the board looked again at the budget. And because our budget comes so early in the cycle, there are usually a handful of things, a handful of numbers that we haven't been able to pinpoint. Health insurance would be one of them, which is a relatively large piece of our personnel section of the budget. So, so we're able to make some small changes in the budget. We've also had two retirement notifications, two certified staff members who are retiring. We didn't know those in January, and so the Board of Ed was, was able to reduce their original proposed budget from four point four-six to three point eight-three percent. Susan gave you, Mrs. Bransfield gave you a little bit of an idea of, of the budgets over the last five years. These are different five years. But the point here is that we're about, as she presented, about a two percent budget average over the last, over the last five years. And this includes this proposed, I'm sorry, it does not include this proposed year. Let's talk a little bit about our budget priorities and what's reflected in this. So we knew last year that with the zero budget, the, or the zero town budget, the, there were several priorities that, that, that were able, that we had to adjust. And that was the elimination of a fifth-grade teaching position. And we had a surprising increase in the number of kindergarten students. And so this slide represents the difference between what is now and what we are proposing for next year. So if you, if we have for our current fourth grade, who will be moving into fifth grade, if we remained as four sections as it is now, we'd have about, we'd have twenty-six students per classroom. And if we increase to five sections, which is what is contained in this budget, it is twenty-one children per class. And with that large sixth grade, I'm sorry, with that large kindergarten classroom moving to first grade, if we keep it as, at six sections as it moves to kindergarten, it would be nineteen children per classroom. If we, if we do not hire a new teacher for first grade, we have twenty-three children per classroom. So another budget priority, another significant change, but reflective of what I said earlier with the more significant social, emotional needs of our students, is the fact that we have an unprecedented number of students who, whose IEPs, whose individual ed plans, because they are identified as children with special needs, require that we hire more one-to-one assistance. And so we have in this proposed budget, an increase of, of eight paraprofessionals. Four of them would be at Valley View, one at Gildersleve, two at Brownstone, and one at Portland High School. I think, I think you're on.
Yes, our next budget priority is to add additional services, a therapeutic day program to cover grades K through six, similar to the program that we implemented about two years ago with grades, the higher grades, the secondary schools. We have thirteen potential students who would benefit from this. As Dr. O'Reilly has already discussed, there's additional programmatic needs that these children have that need to be addressed. And we're trying to make sure that the board's commitment to keep as many children in district as possible can be maintained by adding the therapeutic day program for the lower grades. Would allow for a continuity of services from the pre-K grades right up through twelfth. We're seeing many more kids at younger ages that have these greater needs. And creating this program is going to benefit not only the children who are participating in the program, but also those who aren't. It's going to make everyone have a better environment for learning. The next slide talks about the cost of the program. There is a one full-time special ed teacher. That includes the salary and benefits. An increase of the four paraprofessionals support the needs of the children. And then a hundred and ten thousand in our budget is for the clinician and, and a contracted supervision service for that clinician. We don't have anyone on staff that would be of certification level to certi, to supervise that person. So that would, may, might be done through the Wheeler Clinic contract, an extension of that contract. The next slide talks about our current outplacement costs for five existing students. They're currently outplaced. And this program would address their needs and allow them to stay within district. There's also potential students who aren't currently outplaced but are on the cusp of, of needing outplacement without this program.
I'd like to talk a little bit about that if I could. Let me just get to the right slide.
So you will see here that, as Ms. Peters has, has indicated, you can see that we've, we've broken this out for you. This is a model, and that's why I put it there as a savings model. We have more children who will be able to qualify or whose education plan requires them to be in a more restrictive environment like that of the therapeutic day program. So I'm just modeling to you what we have now. So right now, we have two children who are actually outplaced in a neighboring town, who has a similar, who, the town has a similar program. We also have three children who are in the process now of being outplaced in other, other towns or other institutions that could meet the students' needs. We believe that those five students' needs could be addressed in a local program. Now let me assure you, there are more students than what's being modeled here. These are just what I, what we tried to do for the Board of Ed recently was to just show them a, a piece, if you will, of, of the savings that we could obtain by this particular program. So, and typically, as you would imagine, we not only have to pay tuition costs, but we have to pay transportation costs. We sometimes also have to pay other service costs, speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy. That isn't factored in here in this model, but that too could be a potential savings for us because we could use our own staff and not be billed at an hourly rate from a, from an outplaced clinic or another school district. So then we can take a look at what are potential savings that we could have by offering that. And so this slide just shows you that there is a potential savings that we could, we could have. One of the things that I've, I've heard, one of the questions that people have asked me is, so if we are able to, if, if in this proposed budget, we have this therapeutic day program, why do we also have the number of outplacement costs for seven or eight of our, our students? And I, I wanted to address that, that this is, this proposed therapeutic day program addresses one type of student. And there are many developmental issues that could factor into an outplacement, whereby we may not have a program that addresses a, a, a particular student who has a particular developmental issue. We have students who have very significant health issues. And usually, those students would be considered for outplacement because of a facility's ability to address those, those health needs. And then, and then the last thing is sometimes we have to outplace students because of safety issues. And nobody likes to hear that, but that is the truth, that, that we have to make those very difficult decisions. So I want to just also talk to you about the success of our current, our current program, the sister program, if you will, for the Portland Public Schools. And that's the Wheeler Clinic Collaborative, or the Wheeler Collaborative, we call it. We started with an idea that we, a goal of twelve students. We've exceeded that. We have actually thirteen, and it may even be one more in that particular program. Ladies and gentlemen, I want you to know that these are students in grades now six through twelve, because we even have moved a few kids from Brownstone to the program because of its success and our ability to meet their particular needs. But I, I will say that we have been able to decrease the numbers of students who are truant and increase the number of students who are actually attending school. As you well know that we have, we've worked really hard to address these social, emotional issues. The program is a, a, a self-sustaining program, but it's within the Portland High School, the Portland Secondary School. So we try to, to have those expectations, those academic expectations, but we certainly work very hard at the social, emotional, and behavioral expectations. So we have seen an increase, and I'll show you in a minute in another slide where that, where that particular increase, that particular positive thing that has occurred. We have kids who are in school, who wouldn't normally be in school, attending this program. They are kids who may be phobic, school-phobic, and not attending school and staying at home. They may be kids who have decided that because they're disconnected with the school, that they drop out. And that is the benefit of this particular program. The fact that we have thirteen kids who really are getting some very significant needs addressed in this program. And we, the Board of Ed wanted to, really wanted to establish an elementary program at the same time that we did the Portland High School secondary program, but we chose to put it off for a couple of years till we could see the success and also ensure that it was a cost-effective measure for us. So I'm going to stop there in terms of those priorities. And then I think that everybody, especially again now that we have transitioned to online learning, that we have significant costs that are incurred because of our technology infrastructure. So two of the things that are in this budget right now, we have, we want to address the Wi-Fi access points at Brownstone and Intermediate School in Gildersleve, so that all five buildings now will be, will be updated. The current Wi-Fi access point system at Brownstone and Gildersleve is at least eight years old. And in a cost-saving effort last year, we squeezed in an additional one-year warranty. And it was more cost-effective for us to reach out to the company, see if we could get a, a one-year warranty on it. They gave us an additional one-year warranty for this current school year. They will not give us another warranty. And so we really need to, to replace that. One of our most successful pathways for kids is our math and science and technology initiative, Project Leadway Initiative, at Portland High School. Some of the devices that our most able students are using are five years or more old. And so we really need to, and have begun already, but we need to continue to replace them. One of the great things that Dr. Britton has done is, is presented to the board and received a unanimous approval for the replacement cycle of our technology. As we've transitioned into a more technologically-based school, we really felt like that we needed a cycle for replacement. And so this isn't just a decision to buy hundreds of devices. We need to know how we replace them, but we also replace them, but we also need to know we have to be responsible in the replacement cycle. And so the Board has approved this replacement cycle for Chromebooks, for smartboards, for projectors, for these desktop computers, for our labs. And finally, I want to add is that we have downsized the number of labs that we are using district-wide, because obviously we've moved to a one-to-one in so many different places. But there are still certain curricular areas that require our desktop units and high-end desktop units, and so that's why they're part of the replacement cycle. Sharon, I think this is yours.
Thank you. I would say about, well, three to four months ago, the Board of Education unanimously approved a contract to have a company called Sightlines assess the short and long-term needs of each of our school buildings at a cost of $36,400. Right now, the district is going through, and many of you, I believe, have participated in an exercise called "The Vision of the Graduate" with Dr. O'Reilly. That's the first step that the Board is taking in coming up and developing a strategic plan for the district, so that we can start to address things in a more systematic fashion. And this is one piece of that, one piece of information that we need in order to be able to develop and implement a strategic plan for the district going forward. It's going to help us prioritize the many needs that the buildings have, that we're all pretty much aware of, and allow us to address them in a better, in a better fashion so that we don't wait for certain things to be an emergency requirement and we can better assess the viability as we go forward of each of our facilities. This is another example of a longevity and replacement cycle-type thing that the Board has begun to look at, along with our technology also, painting repairs to the buildings. The roof at Brownstone pretty regularly needs repairs to the slate. So this is going to help us to hopefully gauge costs better, make better assessments as to what needs to be done first, and should help us to maintain and keep all of our school buildings viable for a long time into the future.
So you'll see the 2021 proposed capital requests, and then those in blue are those that are included in the First Select Women's Budget. So the removal of the oil tanks at our three elementary schools, driveway repairs at Valleyview at Gildersleeve, sidewalk repairs at Gildersleeve, and track replacement. Many of you have probably heard us talk about the track, and it continues to be a project that we must address. It really is a safety and security issue, a safety issue for our students that are running track. So those that are funded, as I said, are in blue, and those that are funded, are not funded currently but were requested for this capital, in this capital season. Sharon indicated to you our ever-growing needs, capital needs in each of our buildings. And here are some examples of our five-year projects as presented in the Board of Education budget. Resurfacing of parking lots, paving at the Brownstone, chimney repairs. The chimney repair at both Valleyview and Gildersleeve is a, they're both complicated projects. Carl Johnson is working hard to determine why we continually have issues with water getting into the buildings, and we believe in part because of the structure of these chimneys. So there are some ideas for repairs and/or significant reduction of the size of the chimney, particularly at Valleyview School. Slate roof repairs, carpeting. This is a project that was proposed when I began in 2014-15 school year. We haven't addressed it yet. HVAC, we've done a really nice job, I have to say, at addressing some HVAC needs, particularly at the secondary school, but we still have more. And getting on a replacement cycle for those high-cost elements would be a really important thing for the Board to do as we move forward. Asbestos abatement. We started Phase 1, as you remember, two, three years ago, and we've put a pause on it because of the limitations, the challenges of budget, but we still have three more phases to go. And what we've done looks phenomenal, but we need to continue to do that at Brownstone. And of course, we need to do that at Valleyview as well. Some of the tiling at Valleyview is quite old as well. And then, this is, the next project is one that I continually talk about in the fact that we have single-pane windows at Gildersleeve School, and we really need to address both the windows and doors in a comprehensive project at Gildersleeve. Susan mentioned that we are moving, we've moved forward in a boiler replacement for Valleyview. There's two of them, and so we'd like to move forward with a second boiler replacement. And Carl recommends that we address Gildersleeve as well because it is of a similar age as the Valleyview boilers. Gildersleeve School Security, fronts, entryways, a particular topic we've been trying to address for a couple of years, for several years, actually. The secondary school auditorium flooring, gym flooring at the high school, security upgrades, painting, and some of these other things have already been mentioned. And of course, the technology upgrades. We would like to continue to replace or upgrade our food service lines, our cafeteria rooftop units. We'd like to get into a furniture replacement cycle for all schools. We need a van to be replaced at some point in the near future. Baseball field, Carl feels that we need to address, and some gymnasium equipment needs to be upgraded in the coming years. So I want to conclude with three slides that gives you both good news and bad news. This is a slide, Select Board, that I shared with you last year. It is what we call, what the state of Connecticut calls, our next-generation accountability results. And there are 12 areas where, which every district is evaluated, 12 areas. And then we are ranked among the other schools and school districts in the state of Connecticut. I talked to you already a significant amount about our high-needs students. If you look at number two, academic growth, high-needs group, that is a particular challenge for us, and our scores are reflective of that particular area. And we need to make some significant changes, and that's why we are proposing those significant changes in special education, so that we can continue to make those changes. What are those high-needs groups, ladies and gentlemen? They are not just students with special education needs. They are students who are on our free and reduced roll. And we've increased to almost 30% of Portland students who receive free or reduced lunch. And it also is reflective of the numbers of English-language learners who have moved into the town of Portland and require English-language services. And some of you may know that the Board of Education approved a part-time position this year so that we could address that. That is, too, is in the budget, in the proposed budget. So, but that, the academic growth of that population of students has been a significant need, and that is the more challenging news. If you look at numbers, if you look at numbers actually three and four, this is where I think our numbers, if you, when you, I have the link here, and I will give you a copy of this. If you go into the state website, you will see the report. And the assessment participation rate in our chronic absenteeism has directly been impacted by our Wheeler Clinic. The fact that more kids are now taking the assessments because they're in school, which is a requirement, and that the fact that more kids are in school consistently is also another factor. So those two areas have increased for us. College readiness is sturdy. Post-secondary and college readiness exams, we're doing a, we're doing a very decent job with our more advanced exams. AP would be one of them. Our graduation rate still remains in the mid-90 percentile as it has for the last few years, and we continue to be proud of that. Our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate is solid. Our six-year graduation rate is also reflective of that high-needs gap because it actually takes in that group of students and determines how, what percentage of those students actually graduate in a six-year period, because many of them do need extra time to graduate. So, but that is an area where we need to continue to address. And then the remaining post-secondary entrance rate and art access, 10 and 12, are solid performance areas. We've slipped a little bit in physical education this past year, but I know that our intent is to address that in our physical education classes. So that's, so that's a little bit of good and bad news. Last year, I reported to you the top number, that we ranked 59th out of 203 school districts when you take those 12 measures, when you look at that accountability result. And it, so last year when I reported it, I'm reporting the results from the year prior. So last year, 1819, I reported the 1718 results, because the results are a year behind for us from the state. The results that we just received this year are the 1819 results, and we have dropped from 59th to 90th, which is reflective, again, of those particular high-needs students. And I will say the star asterisk, we now, because we have increased the numbers of students who require English-language services to over 40 kids, we now have, we now have a population of students that actually can be measured by this instrument. And so this is the first year, because we've reached a certain level that we're actually able to be measured using that cohort, that separate cohort for English-language learners. So that is a particular challenging piece. And I'll leave you with this, and this is a slide I left you with last year as well. And I know that it is one that we can look at as a both positive in what we are able to do with what we have, but also the fact that we do have particular needs. The fact is that the average cost per pupil for the state of Connecticut is $18,810. Our cost per pupil is $16,101. We like to think that our taxpayers get a lot for that, and we believed it. And we believe it. We're 134, ranked 134 of lowest out of the 166 districts. And in this case, ladies and gentlemen, we want to be low, in essence, I guess, because it is that low cost per pupil. But we are at the bottom 20th percentile for our school expenditures as compared to other towns in the state of Connecticut. So that is the conclusion of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next part of our information is we're going to be sharing some letters that came to the selectmen, and I'm going to read some of them, and I'm going to have our selectmen help us with reading them as well. And then we'll take questions from our audience. So the first one, I tried to do these in alphabetical order, is from Heidi Abbott from Fairview Street. "As a parent of a sixth grader in our wonderful town, I'd like it to know, be known, that I'm in 100% favor of the proposed Board of Education budget. Our kids are one of the, are of the utmost importance, and any cuts in their education is not acceptable. Please support the Board of Education budget because our kids are worth it." The second is from Rachel Anderson, and she lives on Rustic Terrace. "I write in support of no further reductions to the Board of Education budget and hope that you do too. The crisis our nation is currently going through is very unsettling. That said, I wanted to share with you something remarkable that I witnessed today, something that no doubt happens in Portland every day. This morning, I went to Valleyview and Gildersleeve Schools to pick up distance learning packets for my first and fourth grade children. I was greeted with smiles, and all staff were genuine in their efforts to help me and the other parents. Passion and leadership were strongly felt. There was a true sense of community, a community that together will be able to overcome challenges we are faced with today and tomorrow, whatever they may be. Dr. O'Reilly, the school principals, and teachers really stepped up the way they do each and every day. I'm thankful for their leadership. The job they are asked to do is giant, some would say mission impossible. They do it and do it well, the way that I expect them to. The budget they are currently operating off of is unacceptable. We simply can't ask them to fulfill their duties with even less money. As I mentioned, my kids are in first and fourth grade, and I've been pleased with the education they have received in Portland, including how both schools have met their individual needs. My fourth grader is a quick learner and excels in school. It comes easy to him, and he thrives on learning new things and being challenged. His teachers have always modified curriculum, so he learns at his level and continues to develop. My first grader has come a long way this year. He struggled some in kindergarten and had to work very hard to catch up to goal level in first grade. He has received additional support in the classroom and from reading specialists. He has made significant progress, progress I'm certain would not have been possible without the additional support. I'm concerned with less money, that resources simply won't be available to support my children's needs. Again, please approve the budget the Board of Ed has submitted to you. A sincere appreciation to each of you for your leadership and commitment to the success of our town today and into the future. I welcome the opportunity to share more with you, to the extent helpful." Just as a brief aside, I want to point out that there is not any proposed reduction in the current expenditures for our town, either in general government or Board of Education. What has been reduced are the requests. So there is an increase to the current budget, and we went over that during the presentation, but I just want to be sure that that's clear. I'm going to have Mike Pelton read a couple of letters now, if he would. Mike, thanks.
This letter is from Lauren Christensen. "Dear First Selectmen, Bransfield, and Board of Selectmen members, I'm writing to you today in full support of the proposed Board of Ed budget with a 3.83 increase from last year. As a Board of Ed member, I can assure you that this budget is transparent, conservative, and necessary. We live in a beautiful town full of wonderful families, and our children deserve a better education than a lower increase can provide. Absolutely necessary in this new budget is our new program aimed at servicing K through 6 students with extreme social-emotional needs. Our students, like others around the country, are struggling with regulating their emotions throughout the school day, and teachers are seeing a marked increase in disruptive behavior. This increase, these behaviors not only put a strain on our educators, but they disrupt the education of more typical students, hindering their own feelings of safety in school and their own educations. These behaviors are symptoms of their emotional needs, and our district has the ability to meet these needs within our four walls, rather than chancing expensive $70,000 to $100,000 per child plus transportation costs in outplacements. These students who will be serviced directly deserve this program, and all children in district will benefit as well, in addition to townspeople by way of taxpayer savings. Last year's 0% budget increase increase resulted in painful cuts to our Board of Ed budget. Our certified salaries and benefits contractually increase every year. Without this 3.83% increase, we will be continuing to let our town's children down by being unable to restore programming and staffing that is integral to our educational system. Our town as a whole benefits from the outstanding work of our faculty, staff, and administrators. An excellent educational system is vital to keeping Portland a place in which young families deserve or desire to raise their children. Our town needs this increase to accommodate from last year's 0% raise. Please know I greatly appreciate the work that you do and the difficult choices that lay ahead. Please fully fund the Board of Ed proposed..." Please fully fund the Board of Ed proposed 3.83% increase." From Lauren Christensen, wagon wheel lane.
I want to point out that it's not a zero increase, it was a zero tax increase, but the increase for the Board of Education was 2.4% for the current year, in terms of expenditures. But Lauren's correct, the mil rate had a 0% increase.
All right, this letter is from Melissa Felter. "Good afternoon. I won't be able to attend the budget meeting this evening, so wanted to provide my comments via email. In my opinion, schools are one of the most important things to fund in our town. We should be supporting the Board of Ed and approving the budget they request. They have said any additional decrease may result in losing additional teaching staff, which is unacceptable. Please vote to fully fund the 3.83% Board of Ed request. Thank you, Melissa." One more here from April Graves from Freestone Avenue. "I am writing to express my support for the proposed 2020-2021 budget presented by First Selectman Brandsfield. As a parent of three school-aged children, I am, I'm a proponent of equality education. I understand many parents are concerned about the proposed Board of Ed budget. I believe that this concern has been exasperated by recent social media posts criticizing the proposed budget, with some posts even describing the proposed Board of Ed budget as an extreme budget cut. The truth is, in this proposed budget, the Board of Ed budget will actually be increased by $595,000, hardly an extreme budget cut, rather, rather a significant increase. The increase in the general government budget, which encompasses all the other departments in our town, is only proposed to increase by $362,000. If we were to increase the Board of Ed budget anymore, what would, what would we be willing to give up in the other areas of our budget? There's only so much money to go around, and there are numerous critical needs in the other town departments that cannot be ignored or underfunded. My concern is that in order to pass the Board of Ed budget at the 3.83% being advocated for, we would have to make sacrifices elsewhere. Should we not replace the town fire tanker truck? This truck has been in use in departments since 1985 and has been deemed critical to be replaced. Without a new reliable tanker truck, our fire department will not have the means necessary to save our town's citizens and homes from fire. Should we not fund the replacement of the air bottles the firemen rely on to breathe while battling fires that are about to expire and will be out of compliance in a few months? Should we not replace the eight police cars and two snowplows that have been deemed irreparable by the town mechanic due to their age and mechanical issues and the repeated money being spent to repair the same vehicles again and again? Without funding these critical needs, how will our police officers perform their vital work in our town, and how will our public works department plow our roads?" These are only a few examples of the needs of the town. We also have a 60-year-old boiler at Valley View and one, and one at the firehouse that will need to be replaced sooner rather than later. And of course, the ever-mounting issues with the water and sewer infrastructure and the continuing unaffordable rate increases connected to them. I think it is important to understand that we are not just voting for something when we vote to increase our departments, one department's budget, we are voting against other things in the other department's budgets. From April Graves.
Jim, Jim Trup.
Sure. First letter I have is from Sarah Hare. "Dear Board members, I would like to let you know that my husband Eric and I support the current proposed budget for the Board of Education and hope that you will all support it as well. Thank you, Sarah Hare." The next letter is from Mia Hawk, 61 Bartlett Street. "Good morning, Susan. I hope this email finds you, finds you staying healthy. In these unprecedented times, I want to say thank you for Portland's efforts in keeping us all safe and healthy. I have had the opportunity to attend our Board of Education meetings and want to express my support for the Board of Ed budget and the work they are doing. I believe that it is even more imperative now to financially support our school system. Our teachers and administrators have shown an extremely high level of commitment to our students during this time, and full, fully funding the proposed 3.83% increase will be an imperative in ensuring they can continue their efforts. We have committed teachers and administrators, I'm sorry, we have committed teachers and administrators, and retaining them and supporting their efforts should be our greatest commitment. Please consider funding their most recent request fully. Thank you, Mia Hawk." Next letter is from Elizabeth Hibino, 19 Scenic Drive. "Dear Susan Brandsfield and members of the Board of Selectmen, I am writing to support the Board of Ed budget as presented to the Board of Selectmen with a 3.83% funding increase. Our schools need this funding after years of flat funding and cuts to their proposed budget. We need the new behavioral health program to reduce out placements and the tremendous cost that goes along with them, and to support as many of our students locally as possible. We need all of the teaching positions in this budget. Our kids and, and our teachers deserve better than to have additional teaching positions cut. Please consider reinstating the entire Board of Ed budget, which was already trimmed down and is supported by every member of the Board of Ed. As a parent of a kindergarten student, I am becoming more and more aware of how important this funding is. My child's kindergarten class, even with the sixth teacher, is large in comparison to class sizes in the past few years. His teacher could greatly benefit from the power in the classroom. There is so much more that our schools could use, and cutting away from this very careful budget is not the answer right now, especially given the cuts we have sustained in the past few years. Cutting this budget down to 2.8% would be devastating. Thank you for your consideration and your hard work for the town of Portland. Elizabeth Hibino." And this letter is from Renee Highland, 181 Paley Farms Road. "I support the 3.83% budget as developed at the Board of Education meeting. We are seriously considering moving out of this town after the last few budget years and paying more taxes somewhere else in order to support our three kids' public education. I can't support cuts that will force principals to choose between properly staffing the youngest grades, who happen to have a significant number of behavioral kids, and repairing a roof. Thank you for all of your hard work on this. I recognize it's never easy. Renee Highland."
Luke here.
First letter is from Kristin Larson from 17 Old Carriage Road. "Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, I am a longstanding member of this community, mother of two aged children, two school-aged children, and a teacher at Portland High School. I support our Board of Education budget and recommend the Board of Selectmen support it as well. What we're experiencing right now really drives home how important our schools are and our teachers. Please do to, please do to make any additional cuts to the Board of Education budget as we cannot sacrifice the safety and education of our students. Kristin Larson, 17 Old Carriage Road." This letter is from Megan O'Brien, 42 Indian Hill Avenue. "Dear Board of Selectmen, I am writing today to ask you to please support the Board of Education budget. I have two students in town, and I am a 20-year teacher. I know firsthand the importance of appropriately supporting our schools and staff in order to provide students with the acceptable education. The budget that is being sent to you is fair. The majority, around 80% of the budget, is for salaries and benefits. That leaves very little if, for, for everything else that schools need to function. The actual school building needs attention that cannot be avoided. The students need, needs are increasing yearly as well. I know that we have many students in Portland who are in need of a therapeutic program. If we cannot put this program in place, we'd need to outplace many of these students, which would end up costing us between $500,000 to $1 million per year, depending on the number of students. I am attaching, I am attaching a comments I shared with the Board of Education in support of this program that explains this more. We have to put our students first. We cannot continue to put education on the back burner. This must be a priority of this town. There is nothing more important than providing our children with a superb education and supporting the amazing educators who work with their children every day. Please be sure to do the right thing and put our children's first. Megan O'Brien." This letter is from Jennifer and Jonah Piazek, 27 Stonegate Drive, Portland. "Hello. I am writing in support of the Board of Education budget that was submitted by the Board. As a parent with three children in the Portland School District, we have been pleased with the education and benefit of our children have received by the Portland School System. Last year, we were concerned with the cuts that were made to the fifth-grade teaching team. We know these are difficult decisions that the Board of Education had to make, but the hope was that the cuts wouldn't become a pattern. While we can understand there are budget concerns in today's economy, education has to continue to be a priority. Please support the Board of Education budget and keep it intact. Thank you, Jennifer and Jonah Piazek." And this letter is from Sharon and Steve Kirsch. "Greetings, Portland Board of Education, greetings, Portland Board of Selectmen. My husband and I are writing in support of the current Board of Education budget. We feel strongly that the education system is a defining element of every municipality, and Portland's public schools programs are what drew us here 10 years ago. We have since been continually impressed with the level of education for children, for our children have received here to date. The teachers have been outstanding. The entire school system has risen to the occasion admirably during the current COVID-19 crisis. As a town, we have much to be proud of in regards to the educational programs, but in order to remain in good standing, we must fund them adequately. Last year, we lost teaching positions that we could not afford to lose. This year, it would be incredibly detrimental to the same. Our children and our teachers deserve more. Thank you for your consideration."
Ralph Sanpano.
Okay, the first one is from Jenny and Sean Quinn. "Hello. My husband and I are writing to ask your support of the 3.83% Board of Education budget increase. As parents of three children and employees of a neighboring school system, we understand how imperative it is to maintain small class sizes and keep current teaching positions. We know it is extremely challenging to get positions back that are cut. We also see the importance of improving school safety and developing current programs and offering new programs that keep up with the times. As a growing town, we need to remain competitive with communities around us if we want more families and businesses to move here. We are not satisfied with the, with boasting minimal tax increases if it means sacrificing the education of our children. Please vote in favor of the 3.83% Board of Education budget."
Ralph, a little closer, can you read that one again? I'm sorry. I'm getting notices that they couldn't hear you. Is that on?
Closer than I know.
Hello? There you go.
Okay. So you want me to read it again?
If you don't mind, sorry.
Okay. Again, sorry. Jenny and Sean Quinn. "Hello. My husband and I are writing to ask your support of 3.83% Board of Education budget increase. As parents of three children and employees of a neighboring school system, we understand how imperative it is to maintain smaller class sizes and keep current teaching positions. We know it is extremely challenging to get positions back that are cut. We also see the importance of improving school safety, developing current programs, and offering new programs that keep up with the times. As a growing town, we need to remain competitive with communities around us. We want more families and businesses to move here. We are not satisfied with boasting minimal tax increases if it means sacrificing the education of our children. Please vote in favor of the 3.83% Board of Education budget." The second one, and I apologize ahead of time if I do a horrible job pronouncing the last name, because I'm not sure, but this is from Alexandra Rux, I'm going to say. "Good morning. I'm a Portland resident, and I fully support the Board of Ed budget. Thank you." The second one is also, I assume, from that household, and this is from Magdalena Rux. "I am a Portland resident, and I support the Board of Ed budget. Thank you." And the last one I have is from Elizabeth Trojanowski. She says, "Hi, Susan. I hope this message finds you healthy and well. I wanted to write to you regarding our school budget since we cannot be at the meeting due to restrictions. We support the school budget as it is. In fact, in fact, schools need more support now more than ever. Please accept the budget as it is. If not, increase it. Thank you, Elizabeth Trojanowski."
Thank you, Ralph. Mike Hernandez.
First letters from Ian Witze. "Good evening, First Selectwoman and members of the Board of Selectmen. Could the following be read into the record for the meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, March 17? My wife and I moved here from Portland almost four years ago. After many months of careful thought and research, we were looking for a small town where we can be able to reach, be able to become active in a community and where we could raise our children in a safe and close-knit environment. High on our list of priorities during our search for a new town to call home was quality and reputation of the school system. Smaller class sizes, as well as overall philosophy of education, are very important to us. Portland checked all the boxes for the type of town we were looking for. Our conversations, our conversations about and the research into the schools into our town were a key driver for our decision to settle here. Right now, we have a third grader and a first grader in the schools here, and we couldn't be happier with the education and caring support that our kids have reached in the school system. We also have a two-year-old daughter and are looking forward to seeing her grow and thrive in the schools as well. I would be so disheartened if some of the qualities of the Portland school systems that drew us here were not able to be sustained in the budget cycle. I am asking you to support the Board of Education's current budget proposal of a 3.83% increase. The projected loss of faculty members that would follow a lower budget increase passing could be detrimental to the attractiveness of our town. I feel strongly that many of the actions that the town is now taking in terms of economic development and new amenities is making Portland more and more appealing to young families seeking out the same qualities that we, that we were searching for, for our new home. I would hate to see the school system lose the funding and support that it deserves as it would be a setback in the great progress that this community has made. Thank you so much for your consideration. Please stay healthy. Ian Witze, 21 Cody Lane." Next letter is from Jennifer Witze. "Hello, members of the Board of Selectmen. For those of you I have not met in person, my name is Jen Witze. I am a resident at 21 Cody Lane. I kindly request that you read this letter into the record for March 17, 2020, public hearing. My proudest accomplishment is that I am a mother of three incredible children, Liam at nine, Adrian at seven, and Maura at two and a half. Almost four years ago, it was close to the time for my oldest son Liam to enter kindergarten, and my husband and I, and I made a decision to move from East Hartford to a better school system. I am a teacher in Newington and know the high caliber of professionals I work with. The town, that town could have been a great choice for us. Some family and friends urged us, 'Come to West Hartford, our schools are great.' But despite, despite being a town over from where I teach first grade, Weha was not the place for us. I grew up in Marlborough and would love to provide my children with the same incredible childhood I had that feel, that I feel comes from a small town and close community. And since, Marlborough could have been a great choice for us also. I teach, I teach with a valued colleague friend and Portland resident, Tracy Moden. And during our homestretch, I asked her about the Portland Public Schools. She shared how happy her family was here and that the class sizes were small. Tracy said how Portland does a wonderful job balancing the rigors of today's academic standards with the need for kids to just be kids. Our decision was made, and now Portland is our happy home. In fact, we love Portland so much that my sister moved from Middletown just in time for my nephew to enter kindergarten's last, kindergarten last school year. My brother and his wife plan to put an offer in a house in this town as soon as their current home hits the market in about a week. My parents soon plan to follow. They've already got their eye on the market and can tell you all about their current listings. Portland is a hidden gem for young families, and we do not want to see that change." Excuse me? I wish I had a glass of water. "When Liam started kindergarten year here, there were 16 students in his class, 16. While it would have been ideal to maintain that number, his class now has 20 students in it. It is not as incredible as 16 students, but it is not certainly unreasonable. Portland classes size allow their gifted teachers to deliver high-quality instruction that meets the needs of all students because sizes are small, because sizes are small, teachers are able to have more connect time with their students. I started teaching in 2005, and while that feels like yesterday, I am completing my fifth" 15th year in public education. I've taught grades five, four, three, elementary technology, and currently spend my days loving life in my first grade classroom. I'd like to take a look at what a small snippet of an elementary day is like in just one subject area, reading instruction. While I work in another district, both Newington and Portland use Lucy Cawkins Unit of Study to Design and deliver our reading instructions. I know that my day is not much different than what happens here in Portland due to the time I've spent in classrooms volunteering and serving on a PTO for both Valley View and Gildersleeve. I begin my reading block with a 10-minute mini lesson where we use a familiar text to practice a teaching point for the day. Students are sent off to read independently from texts that are at their just right level and practice their teaching point. During this time, I conference with, I conference with individual students about their goals in reading and pull strategy or small groups to help my readers work through text at their instructional level. In a word, it's magic. Over the course of a week, I have time in my schedule for 10 group meetings and have my 19 students split into five different groups. I meet, I meet with my struggling readers the most and on my, and on my, on level and above readers less often in group time. Due to the potential budget cuts, Dr. O'Reilly shared that the only place left to trim from are the full-time positions, and I'd like to break down what that would mean for elementary learners in just that area of reading. Currently, there are about 19 to 20 students in each elementary class, and one of those classes gets dispersed amongst the grade level. That will add four to five students to each room, bringing the class sizes 23 to 25 students. Although Betsy DeVos thinks that's fine, any sane person would quickly tell you otherwise. Those four to five additional students make up their own reading group size. If the teacher meets with the group only two times a week for 15 minutes each time, that equals 30 minutes of direct instructional, instructional week. If you have multiplied that 30 minutes by a conservative 39 weeks in a school year, there are a few more than that. That equates to 1,170 minutes of instruction. I know that was a lot of math and it's not even common core. That takeaway is that 1,170 minutes of reading instruction will be lost from the other students in the class because their teacher will be balancing class size that is too large and atypical of our fantastic school system. The wild thing is that the potential impact in just one subject area. If I had more time, I could talk about additional impact to math, writing, science, and social studies, phonics instruction, social emotional learning. There's a lot to cover in one day. Or we can just discuss the impact on the class with 24 different personalities, or when a child who has any range of behavioral needs is having a difficult day. The impact truly cannot be measured. Please, members of the Board of Selectmen, support the current proposed Board of Education budget at 3.83% and protect those 100, 1,170 minutes of critical reading instruction along with the countless other educational impacts. Send a message of solidarity and support during these unprecedented times. The Portland is a town that will stand behind us most vulnerable residents, our children, to ensure that they are continued to get the best education that they can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Michael. There may be other letters that are in my email, and I had told residents that they should continue to send in letters at least through Friday and also during the budget season, and I'll be sure to share them with the selectmen. So if you had sent a letter in and perhaps it was inadvertently not read tonight, I will research again my email and make certain that I got everything. These letters came in before 5 o'clock, but there may be some that I missed. So with that, I would ask if there are folks online that would like to ask a question or make a comment?
There are. I'm way too loud. There we go. No, I'm still loud. Who am I? There we go. That's better. Okay. So we have, we're going to read these in order as they were sent in. First, we have a comment from Dave Murphy. He did not provide an address. Comment for the Board of Education budget. Keep in mind salaries and benefits account for almost 80% of the budget. Increases here are fixed by contracts. Salary and benefits increases total 660,000, but the First Selectwoman's proposed increase is 596,000, which leaves nothing for anything else but to cover salaries and benefit mandated increases. I know we don't like our taxes to go up, but we all know and understand that as costs go up, so must revenues. The next comment is from Megan O'Brien, 42 Indian Hill Avenue. And I have many strong feelings about what is happening with our budget at this time. It is absolutely unacceptable that our per pupil, per pupil expenditures is in the bottom 20% of the entire state. Our children deserve so much better than this. The budget that the BOE has put forward is fair and is more reflective of what our students deserve. Please do not cut anything from what the BOE has passed. Our students deserve better than what we are giving them. Thank you. Oh, that's my comment. Okay. Next up is actually from Selectman Rick Scharr, and his is in the form of a question. What is the current trend on student enrollments? Is it increasing, decreasing, or stable? And that's probably to Philip?
Yes. Fiona?
Enrollment?
So the, the question was, what is the current trend on student enrollments? Is it increasing, decreasing, or stable?
It is stable. One of the interesting dynamics that occurred this year is that our enrollment actually dropped in September, as compared to September of last year. But the irony is that, or the surprising thing is now, the enrollment is almost exactly the same as it was at this time last year. So we had a large increase between September and now, large populations of kids moving in.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving down the list here, we have Christopher Pickett from 22 Fox Run Road. He says, I am an educator and look at Portland as a district on the rise. What I have witnessed over the last 13 years, that my wife has been a part of the district amounts to great strides to grow and deliver a relevant curriculum to the students of the 21st century. As a parent, I am confident that my son and daughter will learn all that they need to thrive in this era of changes. However, in order for that to happen, we need to provide services that meet the needs of all students. And to lower the budgets from the proposed increases, and to lower the budgets from the proposed increases would cause Portland to trim back programming as well as staff vital to our students population, which is unacceptable. It is becoming more evident that our schools are cornerstones of our community. The events of the last week underscore the vital role it plays in the lives of our students, not just educationally, but emotionally and socially. As soon as the school shut down, our educators rushed to serve our students and meet their needs even though they are not there.
Kevin, can I interrupt you for just a minute?
Yes.
Will these be available for printing, for downloading, so that we can have those as well as part of the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll take a copy of that.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. He continues, as taxpayers, we need to show our dedication to the community and go forward with the proposed BOE budget. And he thanks us for our time. Next up, we have Erin, and I'm sorry if I say your name wrong, Livin Sparger. She supports fully funding the BOE budget request. She also states, please do not eliminate teaching positions. My son is in the fifth grade class that lost positions this current year, and I'm very worried he will not have full teaching support next year as well. Please know how impressed I am with my kids' teachers, and I want them to have the support they need with the full BOE budget for 2021. Thank you. She continues again. My husband Jeremy Stone is also listening with me and also supports the full BOE budget as proposed by the BOE to the BOS. Please add his support of funding to our schools. And she also thanks us for setting up Zoom so they could watch from home.
Thank you.
And we have Meg Scotta. As a member of the BOE and a former employee, I have seen cuts made over and over again. Positions have been cut, class sizes have been mostly maintained, but each time we make do. As the letters indicated, tonight, our town has attracted many families because our schools, because of our schools. A resolution of 275,000 and 352,000 proposed is 627,000 that we cannot afford to make. And last comment here is from Mia Hulk. Actually, this is in the form of a question. Does the town have any concerns that declining public school ranking could have a long-term adverse impact on our town's revenue as families may look to other districts for housing? That's kind of a both side question.
Sure. Any selectmen want to comment? I'm sorry, Lou, can you speak into the?
It sounds more like a real estate question and I'm not equipped to answer that.
Do you want me to repeat it or you got it?
Any other comments from the selectmen in regard? I think it's important. I certainly do, and it is something that we need to pay very close attention to. I think that Mia's comments are well taken.
And that is all we have from the Zoom meeting.
Michael Pelton had a question. Did you want to ask anything tonight, Mike?
I could, I guess, just.
Just remember to speak into the microphone for our viewers. Thank you.
It really has to do with what we're doing right now. I'm sure it's going to have some kind of impact, and I mentioned it to Dr. O'Reilly just a couple of minutes ago, but I'm wondering what the impact will be from what we're doing now with the school system and the COVID issues. So I don't know if it's going to go up or down, if that'll free up budget money, or if it maybe will tie up additional money, but it is something that I think we ought to be looking at and see what impact that'll be because it'll have a, it'll certainly have a tangible impact.
I would agree. Dr. O'Reilly, did you want to make any comment to that? Thank you.
So it, we're early in this process. We don't know how long it, it will take. We are indebted to Ralph being a part of our, our administration, administrative team that meets every, every single day now at 9:00 AM to review the progress of our plan. And I, I think that we have so many unknowns that it's difficult. So let me give you just two examples, one in each way, one, one in either direction, Mike. One is, we probably will save money in our, our substitute line. That's obvious. We're not hiring substitutes or, or at this point, we're not hiring substitutes. And that's a, that is a large portion of our proposed budget or of any budget. So that may be an area that we may save. But an area that we may increase is technology needs as we begin to use these devices as much as we now require. And as we now transition to our, our younger elementary kids perhaps being more online, that, that, that cost may increase. Ralph was at, at the table this morning when we were talking about the rather limited backup that we have. So if some of these machines fail, their power source fails, we're going to have to go out and, and get some of those. So it could go either way.
Thank you.
Any other questions from our selectmen tonight? I do want to repeat that tomorrow night, which is the 18th of March, we will have our first workshop for the budget that starts at 7:00, and we will also be using Zoom for that. And we will then follow with another budget workshop on the 24th of this month. And that, at that time, we will have more information on the Board of Education budget. We'll be able to have some more back and forth questions and answers, which I think should be very helpful to us. And then we reserve the date of March 25. We may need that for additional workshop-type discussion, answer, and questions. And then the deliberations where we really begin to look at whether there are dollars that can be saved, whether there are dollars that need to be added, as well as other adjustments based on information that we have. And those deliberation meetings will be the 31st of March and also April 1. We will then meet, if not at those times in adopting a budget, but before April 8. April 8 is a holy day, and we will not be meeting on that date. So we will be meeting at some point between the 1st and the 7th to confirm a budget that then will go to a town meeting, which is typically held at Portland High School. But given our national emergency, we don't know yet whether we will be operating as usual or whether we'll still be operating as we are now without large crowds. And the referendum is scheduled for May 11. I would urge everybody to stay tuned to what our state and nation are doing in regard to the COVID-19. It's something that we are in uncharted territory, and we certainly need to pay attention to what our health needs are, but we also need to preserve our democracy and be certain that how we are communicating and getting input from our constituents is the best that we can make it. With that in mind, I would like to say that Dave Kosminski and Kevin Armstrong, I think you've done a great job for us tonight. I think it's been very good, and it's been a learning experience for me. I hope that our audience and our constituents have appreciated, enjoy. Send us your comments. It would be very helpful to us if we would know how we might improve and how we can get more feedback. I think tonight is actually one of the better public hearings on budget that I've been to. So I do want to compliment those that sent in letters and comments, and I also want to compliment those that were observing and, and sending in such good comments. Each and every one of you have done a, a great job in helping us with what are very difficult decisions. So with that, I will say that we will adjourn. However, because of the unique way in which we're getting information and people weren't able to be here tonight, I am keeping the public hearing open for the next few days so that people can continue to send information and/or questions. So with that, I think that we will adjourn. Good evening. Good night.